Fred was A.
All right, one and two and three and four. This special call to meeting to order in our businesses to discuss town charter process for filling Board of Alderman vacancies and process for appointing citizens to boards. If we get to all that before you, if you want to stay for all that. And so the only thing I would add in opening our discussion is that everybody on the board, but Doug and Pam is a, is a product of the appointment process. Alderman Stone was appointed to fill former Fire Chief Tim Raines' spot, maybe, maybe nine years ago, something like that. And seven years ago or so, I was appointed to fill Michael Sobel's seat as he became mayor. And three years ago, two years ago, two and a half years ago. Tim was appointed to fill Jeremy Corningay's spot. And then just last August, Archie was appointed to fill my seat when I was appointed to fill Don's seat. And so in, in our planning and thinking, it's, you never really know what the future might hold, which is what makes some of these things difficult to, to plan for. But we do, I applaud the board for the desire to have transparency in these things. And, and I would also point out that in the statutes and the charter, which it's, leaves, leaves things wide open, that I don't think that's my mistake. I think that was, I don't think it was an oversight. I think they intended, I think that my, my reading of it is the intention is to provide each board across the state, of course, not our charter, but the states, the general statutes, each board, the, and community, the opportunity to, to confine and define those things the way they would like to. And so I look forward to the discussion. What I ask is our town attorney to give us just a little framework for our discussion and then off we go.
Okay. Your agenda calls for discussion of town charter. And I'm assuming that's just a lead in and we're not really going to go through it by the line because I need to someday sit down with the yellow highlighter, look at all the archaic stuff in our charter that needs to be fixed, cause for our elections to be made, that kind of thing, that needs to be cleaned up. So, but the, the big issue that we talked about a few months ago, and I had some thoughts then, is when we, some quirky things about the difference between the charter and the statute, and I'll give you a little history of what happened, is we had a vacancy come over and the town at that time appointed, named Tim, to fill the, to serve the rest of the term of the person being replaced without any thought for what that, those few words would say. When the election was coming on, the question was, does he have to run now or has he got two more years to finish out the term he was appointed to? Our charter says that the board shall, when you have a vacancy, the board shall appoint a replacement for the balance of that elected term. The statute says that the appointee shall serve till the next general election or to the end of, if, if it's different from the end of the term. Or there's a little window there, in the event that vacancies filled inside of 90 days before the next election and that term is not up at the next election, then he serves the end of the term. I've got a problem with that 90 days if we want to kind of have a suggestion. And at that point, then I went to the school of government, I sent you the stuff and the Freida's postings a couple of times, and some emails between me and her about that question. But there are, in addition to the statute that says the board shall form a replacement who will serve until the next election unless, or end of term, but if it's within that 90 days, then they'll serve till the end of term instead of the next election. And the obvious reason being for that, if you appoint somebody 60 days before the next election, or you fill that vacancy and they've got to serve only to the next election, nobody had time to file for that slot. You just, you don't have anybody running for it. And the conclusion from the school of government was that if you have a charter provision that will work just fine standing along, and if you have a statute provision that'll work just fine standing along, the other statutes which I included that tries to tell you which should have priority don't help, the conclusion was then you get to pick and choose. Now, knowingly or inadvertently, when Tim was appointed, I was, you know, I was thinking at that time, okay, he does have to run. And then Freida pulled in their elections expert and says, wait a minute, you may have, you may have made that decision whether or not it's the next election or the next term. We're digging out the minutes and the motion really was to appoint Tim the balance of the term. And, and that's where that lived. So your, your, I guess what's to be considered today and thought about if you want to make a change, is to modify the charter so it's always the same and you can, you can do it just to match the statute and be done. I have a suggestion on that, but like, if anybody here has counted between July the 31st and the first Tuesday of November, you'll notice that's more than 90 days. There is that chance that you could appoint somebody in that little window of five days and neither the statute nor the charter would answer your question. So if you, my suggestion, if you amend your charter to match the statute, you make that 110 days. Give somebody time to file to run if that person has to be replaced, that has to be elected at the next election. But that's just what you've got, my one suggestion, and it's the board's choice on whether to just amend the charter to match the statute, amend the charter to match the statute with the modification instead, or keep the charter provision and just reinstate it, say, this will override the statute and our rule of control. Anybody who's appointed will serve the rest of the term, period, if that's what the board's preference is. But all of that had to be the statute amendment, by ordinance, charter amendment to override that statute. Or to knowingly conform to that statute. Don't make that confusing enough? Well, it confused me last summer.
I appreciate that you sent the documents out beforehand. I've had to read them multiple times to, to get what you just said a little better.
You, you, I didn't want to send those statutes out to you without Freida's law as an email because the statutes, the more I read, the worse it got. And so having somebody who didn't have a fact situation in front of them trying to resolve that helped a lot.
I was glad you explained that in May because that kind of threw me. For it said reelection were in May.
Yeah. And I'm sure there's another little bit you think there, just wouldn't hurt to have those cleaned out.
May I ask a question?
Yes, that's why, that's why we're here.
Okay. So if an Alderman's goal was to have appointments last until the next election or till the term is finished, whichever comes first, would that be a matter of going to the state statute?
The state, yeah, the state statute says till the next election. And, and again, if it's to the next election, it's, it's either going to be the end of the term or they've got two more years on the term. But if you do that, the only recommendation I make is you modify that, make that 100-day, 10-day window instead of a 90-day window, to avoid that possibility that you appoint somebody in that five-day gap and you don't know what the answer is next, when you call an issue, I don't know the answer, as to whether this person is, how long he serves. But yeah, it'd be a charter amendment and you can leave it alone, but reinstate it saying that this is intended to override the statute because you have that authority. Or you can conform to the statute, or you can conform to statutes modified. Any of those three requires a charter amendment. Charter amendments are done by the legislature, not us. We recommend to the, the legislature, they amend their charter.
Would you like a motion? Is it too soon for a motion?
It's, you've got every, every right to make a motion if you'd like to.
So I'd like to move that we amend our charter to conform with the state statute with the modification of 110 days.
So what, where does 110 days, what date does that get you to?
That puts you, I have another calendar in front, that probably backs you up to about the 20th, 20th, where if you go 110 days, probably around the 20th of July, 15th of July.
Well, Doug, aren't, aren't the filing deadline usually like the middle of July?
I was thinking it was the end of July. But you got to sort of run, if it's, if it is, then, then I would back up and we might want to make that 100.
I would make it the first of July because it was early.
Okay. Then in that case, to get us to the first Tuesday of November, we need all of July, August, September, October, and a few days into September 20. You might want to do 135 days, back you back into June, give people time to file.
I'll change my motion to 135 days.
Sure. Just amended it. So you want to repeat that run just to get, make sure everybody's on the same page?
The motion is to amend the charter to conform our charter's provision for filling vacancies on elected boards, to conform to the state statute modified to provide that anybody who is appointed 135 days, within 135 days of the next election will serve the balance of the term and not just to the next election. Otherwise, they serve at the next election.
Very good. So you got the motion before you, are you ready for discussion about that? Questions? If not, Alderman Stone.
Ryan Stone, aye.
Arthur Perchiller, aye.
Tim Raines, aye.
Doug Hay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
Great. All right. One agenda item gone.
Can I ask a question real fast or maybe make a suggestion? So the 135, when we're doing, that's going to go before the legislature to change. Do you, I don't, and I don't mind helping, would it make sense to go ahead and hit the other parts of the charter at the same time, instead of having to go back again to legislature and change it, or do we need to change like dates and times?
I don't think, it would be an opportune moment if I got to call John's office up and say, give me your legislative system, we're going to send you something. It might not hurt to take a couple of weeks, read the whole charter and come back and look at all the incongruities we might just address all at one time. That makes sense.
Is that agreeable to the board? I think that's a good idea.
There's, there's one exception that I'd like to just inquire if we could, if the board would consider today. It's not just an incongruency, it's a, a change. And I'm wondering if we could talk about changing the name of this body from Board of Alderman to Town Council.
I'm sure you can talk about it and you can do it. You just need, you need to revote at least.
Yeah. Well, I don't want to, I, it's kind of a thing that wasn't on the agenda, so I didn't want to.
No, but we're discussing all that, it's fine, it fits, it's okay. Don Stade, Mr. Stade?
Yeah. Your first character says it's discussion of town charter. If he's on, we're on that topic and he rings, fair game.
Yep.
Well, I would like to move that we change the name of this body from Board of Alderman to Town Council.
Very good. That's the motion before. Does that wording sound good? I know what your objective is. Is that wording fine, Ron? Very good. So motions, motion is out on, out on the table. Is there any discussion on it?
Oh, before we do, Savannah, do we have any comments from folks about this?
I am monitoring all of our live streams, but I don't see anything.
Okay. And Pam, I'm, I'm completely supportive of what you're, you're wanting to do. I agree with it. My, my only concern with voting on it today is just to give people more time to express their comments on it. So I would, I would actually, if it pleases the board, would just suggest that we hold it open until our February meeting.
I agree with that 100%. That's a good idea.
I think maybe just withdraw your motion.
I'll withdraw the motion.
Anything else on the town charter? It also gives you an opportunity to contemplate other things.
Sure.
And I, I think that's a good idea as well, Pam.
So just so I understand, the next move with the town charter is you're going to go through the, through the whole charter to find?
Yeah, I think everybody needs to. But I will do that, pick out the things I know. But if, if at a meeting we go over all of those, we can look at the ones we need to address and I take another meeting, we're going to end up with probably, the cleanest thing is just to really rewrite the charter, incorporate all of the changes that are mentioned and send that whole new charter to the legislature for a couple of reasons. It's been compiled in pieces over time, we're not sure there are all the pieces that there. I'm sure that if we went, if somebody wanted to take the time to go through the minutes for the last 50 years, we might buy some charter amendments that never made a printed charter. And so it might be a good time, if you want to be as comprehensive, is clean it all up. So you've got a pretty copy, it's posted and that everybody knows that is the charter. We don't have to go looking for changes.
Yeah, I think that's great.
Sounds good. And I might suggest, when you are ready and everybody else is ready, we, we do a workshop. I think it's a nice, a good, it'll be a good workshop item.
That's a good idea.
I agree.
So it sounds good, we'll just, Mr. Stade will keep us posted. And, and I would suggest that, that you, obviously each, each of you can communicate individually, you just need to be mindful of public, the public meeting statutes with the town attorney. But I might suggest that, that you try to hold on to any of your comments and questions and so forth for the net, for our, for our special call meeting on this topic, just so the public can, can be involved and hear and so forth. So I, I, you know, not, I think that's not, I can't make you do that, I just think it's a, a wise idea. So am I mistaken or have we covered A and B?
I have some comments on B. I would like for us to, aside from just establishing that the, the appointee is up for election in the next general election, I'd like for us to establish more of a process that we're, that we're following and we know that we're going to follow as a board anytime there's a vacancy on, on the Board of Alderman. So I've been looking at what a few other towns have done, what Asheville recently did. And this is just a suggestion, I'm not at all saying, suggesting that we have to do it this way, but one thing that they have done is have an application process, require an application process for at least two weeks, and then appoint a committee within the board, so a subcommittee, to select finalists that would then become, go before the board. There'd be a, a period there where we could allow for citizen comments on those finalists and even potentially conduct interviews with the board members and then move to nomination of votes instead of motion and vote to, to actually elect the person or, or select the person for the vacancy. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I understand. And you, and you, those would be your process and interview process and so forth? Those would be intended to be public meetings?
Right. So the, the goals that I would have for this process would be to allow for citizen input, to collect applications, required to collect applications, and allow for citizen input on at least the finalists, if not everyone, and then move to nomination of votes instead of motion of vote.
Right. The only thing I would maybe ask you to consider if you're, and you, you obviously can, you know, take this any way you want to, but you might hold off on a motion on, on that thought until our next meeting. Give everybody a chance to think about it. The only thing I would maybe add to that, Doug, would be that because it's a, a five-member board, and if it's going to be a public meeting, you want quorum. And so you might, we're just a five-member board, so you might as well just make it the board.
To do the, instead of a subcommittee.
Instead of a subcommittee.
Yeah, the subcommittee is the problem that I see us having. Okay, that makes, that makes total sense to me. And I, and I completely agree. I'd love for the, I'd love it if we could have somewhat of a rough process that, that the town could, the citizens could provide feedback on before the next, the next meeting. Yeah, and I'm, Larry, that was an excellent point. I'm, Doug, I'm completely supportive of it. Ron, I wanted to ask you this. I noticed that in my research, that there are certain municipalities that have passed local ordinance that lays out the, the vacancy process for how they will appoint a member to their board in Chapel Hill and in Riverbend and some others. Does it need to be three local ordinance or can it be?
It can either be just an adopted procedure or by ordinance.
Okay.
The public at large might feel better if it had the strength of an ordinance, but either, either way it could be done.
Okay. But I do think that recently both Chapel Hill and Riverbend have gone through this, so they, they've got some templates that we can at least look at as a starting point. Great.
And I suspect you're interested in an ordinance. I don't really see, I don't really see, you know, the, the benefit if you're not going to, you know, make it an ordinance. Boards can still change it.
Sure.
So, you know, it's, that's fine.
If you have a procedure, I think the mayor has a point, if you have a procedure, that's a set of rules, a set of board, and you may find yourself doing this in an emergency situation anyway, even under ordinance. But when you got a procedure, it's a set of rules and the board can always vote to suspend the rules. We've done that on occasion in the past for our appointed boards for their two-term limits. But occasionally you just can't find a body to put this position. We've had an occasion where we've had a chair of the Board of Adjustment in the middle of an elongated battle and they didn't want to swap chairs, so they suspended rules to go by board. For the procedure, you could do that, but in ordinance, that'd be a little more difficult. And give that thought, I can't imagine the emergency situation, unless, I think it'd be an emergency situation if we lost three all. I don't think you could wait to go through that process very long.
Right.
Good. So we might, if it's by ordinance, build in some sort of emergency language.
Other, another contingency that we're living in right now is a situation where you can't gather very easily. Or, you know, we, we've been able to gather, we've been able to do business, the country has really, and world, because of technology. But if you, if something happened that our technology wasn't effective, you know, the, that would also make, you, you would freeze the town business if, if, in those situations. So you want to be able to, you want to be able to have an emergency, you know, backdoor. So, but you're talking the board, the town board, elected officials.
I'm talking to this, this body.
Right, right. Anything else on items A or B?
I have another suggestion along the same lines as Alderman Hay. Instead of accepting applications basically from everybody within the community, why not accept applications from those people who ran in the prior election? And the reason I say that is because, as we all know, going through that process is tedious. And so they did show some interest in serving on this board. So how, why could we not speak with those individuals, all of them, get, and if they wanted to apply, get applications from them? And then the board, as a, as a body, look over those applications and make a decision based upon those.
I mean, only with that group?
Only with that group.
Yeah. The only, the only thing I would see there is you might not have a very big group.
Yeah.
I, I guess ours would be different, we have like nine or 11.
Yeah. Well, I love the idea of encouraging and speaking with the, the former candidates to encourage them to apply. My, my concern would also be if we're talking a year or a year and a half later, other than we're approaching the 135 days out, but, you know, that some of those people might not be interested anymore and it might be a small pool of people.
Anybody else on A or B?
Before, excuse me, before we move on from B, Mr. Mayor, what's the next steps, I guess, for how we would?
Our next meeting, our workshop.
Pull these things together, but that, I'll try to outline that as, as a procedure. And then how you notify applicants and if you give preference to make sure, or some, you want some assurance, guarantee that prior candidates from last election get notice. I think that needs to be a part of an ordinance, but it's probably a part of the procedure. Just that when you give notice to the world, that you give direct notice to, to former candidates.
I agree. That was my, that was the whole point.
And it may be no more than just making sure that you pull up the last ballot and those people do get notice with everybody else.
Anything else on A or B? All right. Now, clarify for me, are you drafting an ordinance or are you drafting a procedure?
We, we've jumped across the line here. The ordinance we talked about that sets up the procedure is, I've outlined it, that was modified as we're along the way. And what Archie's recommended is a piece of that, we give notice to the world that we want to put in there, and I may build that into ordinance, that step, I'll go again. But it's a thought to put in there that, that candidates in the last election who did not win will be given notice, direct notice, so the opportunity to apply.
Very good. Anybody else? And then on to, to BB. So discussion of appointing citizens to boards, the process for appointing citizens to boards.
So that Doug pulled up something from the school of government about their recommended processes we've been doing when we fill other boards. And quite often, it's not an issue, you've got one applicant for, for space, but we've just been simply, first name is nominated, motion's made, and that person wins. And that, and I don't know that there's anything going wrong with that process, but the appearance of that process is if you're number two, you never get a shot. Your name gets, finally gets in the hat. Doug's, the document or the treatise that Doug sent around, it sets out a process where you get all the nominees and you vote basically by ballot and everybody's name, everybody's nominated. Not just nomination, win, forget you guys, but everybody's nominated. You actually have a ballot. If it comes back and the board, you know, it's two, two and one, we're not going anywhere, then you vote it again. And don't know, you, and again, we've got to refine that process, it's two, two and one, does that mean that one is out and we revoke? We, we need some, something that, that doesn't seem to describe, what do we do to refine that field if you get that kind of vote? But if I understand it correctly, that's what the, felt the school of government identified the two processes that are typical and said, school of government's preference is, you do that, get all the nominees names on the table. you do that, get all the nominees' names on the table, do a paper ballot, and then re-vote to get it down to the person who's appointed. Yeah. That might be a little cumbersome, but I think last year, we went through a lot of candidates, there weren't but a couple that we had to keep people to vote for space. Probably in the course, come July or June, when you're filling all those slots, you're probably going to have to go through that process on one or two seats, and it's not as cumbersome as that. But that is the School of Government's recommendation, that we at least, the public sees that all that, all those names fully are on the table. And George, who applied, sitting home, never hears his name, wonder what they allowed. That probably solves that.
Yeah.
Problem of how it looks. I think that's, I think it's a, a good solution, and, and we, again, I think we'll finalize, finalize all these at our next meeting, our next workshop meeting. But I'm wondering on this one, if we wouldn't maybe want to set it up as a procedure rather than an ordinance, and give it a, give it a spin, and just make sure it, it works. Well, you're, remember, we're going to be doing this in a public meeting. And so just kind of see how that flows and what the, you know, I, I have a, sort of two sides to the coin. If I'm a, if you're a capable person and you're willing to serve on one of our, one of our boards, and then you make it kind of cumbersome, or you put it too much out in the public, what does that keep a qualified person from, you know, they just are not comfortable with it? They, you know, not everybody's, you know, not every, that's not everybody's cup of tea, where they might be comfortable serving on, on. I don't, I don't, I just think that's the other side of the coin. I don't think it's a problem necessarily. But I'd like to kind of see how, how it looks in a public setting and so forth. And so I might suggest that when we, when we just come time, comes time to make a decision, that maybe this one would be a good one to treat as a procedure, and then when we're happy with it in 12 months or so, then, you know, it depends on the amount of experience we have with it. And I think probably one, one experience with it will probably be helpful as far as seeing how it feels and looks and so forth. But I will do that, draft something as a separate procedure the board can adopt possibly for this year's round, and then revisit after the general board and see how it goes.
I have a few comments that people are asking me to share, if now's a good time for those.
I think it probably is a good time.
Sean Sloan says, I'm interested in reviewing the code of, the town code of ethics for members of boards and commissions, these are the disclosure of conflicts of interest and refusal of board and commission members. Does this discussion about the charter incorporate that component?
This is a special call meeting, I don't think we can address it today.
And then from Robin Joseph, she said that she is supportive of the change of the name to Town Council. And that's all I have.
All right. If it helps for public who are watching, at a regular meeting of the board that meets every month, agenda meeting, the regular board meeting, the board can take up any matter that comes before it. But when it has a special call meeting, you're really limited to what's in the agenda for that special call meeting. And while they've got, they've raised a good question, just not on their agenda, can't be addressed at a special call meeting. It is, it is, it is, we can put that on the agenda for our next special call meeting if that's the board's pleasure. And, and it's just specifically the code, our code of ethics, what was the comment?
That sounded like it was specifically addressing the code of ethics we have. I guess in our boards and commissions manual, potentially adding that to the charter, if I understood that, if I understood that.
Is that what he said?
Let me read it again. I'm interested in reviewing the town code of ethics for members of boards and commissions, these are the disclosures of conflicts of interest and refusal of board and commission members.
We can just have a discussion on this charter now. That, that is, I will tell you that I don't recommend putting that in the charter because it's a moving target. When you do get on the agenda, I probably want to talk about the conflicts of interest because with the adoption of 160D, the rules have changed on conflicts of interest a little bit. Doesn't affect this board very much, but there is a change. And, and so you wouldn't want that in your charter, that the legislature was something entirely different, would be modifying. So I didn't quite understand you, Ron. Do you think that would be a good topic? It'd be a good topic to discuss, but I don't think you, I wouldn't recommend that you put your code of ethics in your charter. Right. So is that good for the board that we put that on the agenda for our next special call meeting? It's, it's associated, it would be there, it allows, allows especially to, just for a, a good discussion of it.
Great.
And we, didn't we, well, I'll hold it. Your, your ethics policy is relatively new. Yeah, that's what I was getting at. But again, as the mayor said, we're on COVID time, I don't know what relatively new is. That's right. So we have our, our three agenda items there. Is there any other discussion on any of those or comments?
Well, I just appreciate the opportunity to take a new process for a test drive in terms of appointing citizens to the boards. I think it's good, a good idea to check out how it'll work before we move forward. You know, I just, I don't like the notion that whichever alderman raises their hand first, that person gets nominated real quick, you know. I think opening some space up and taking a little longer with these nominations is a good idea. But it'll be good to see how it works in, in reality.
Any other comments or questions?
Mayor Harris, can you clarify right now, are, if someone applies to a system board or committee, is that application public record as it stands right now?
Yeah. Anything that comes through these, you know, through the doors here or whatever, or among three, it'd be three of this group, it's public record.
Okay.
Anything else public record that I can think of? Occasionally, there's a mix. That you, employee records are not public records, so people applying for a committee or commission think that their information is employee information, it's not public record, they are not. So if you're applying to board or commission, that's not to be an employee of the town, that's all public record. That's the same reason that if you want to chew Josh out, you have to take him, and you can't go into a closed session and do it. If you want to close, chew out the town attorney, I'm not a town employee, you got to do it out in front of everybody. And so that distinction about employee records has to be precise.
I'd also add that when they apply, they are made aware that their application is a public record.
Okay, great. One of the, one of the documents you sent yesterday said that, or what, that their process, I think it was with the town that we were looking at, said their process, the applications were kind of open for the next year, so if there was another vacancy on that committee, then it was automatically transmitted with.
The thing's true for us, when someone applies to one of our advisory boards or commissions, it's kept active, as we call it for a while now.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions or comments on our agenda items?
I'll just say that Savannah and I will send out an email for dates for the special call in February.
Sounds good. This time, 8:30 in the morning work well for everybody. Good, that sounds great. Thank you. Good meeting. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Ron. Meeting adjourned.
Well, unfortunately, you guys have some more work to do.